This meeting of the King City Planning Commission to order, it is now nine thirty six. We'll start with a roll call.
All right. Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Paulson. You can raise your hand in. Commissioner Manalas.
There.
And Chair Petrie.
Here.
All right, and I have Commissioner Bellows and Commissioner Reynolds is absent for time being.
Okay, so the, thank you, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, we have no minutes, so we'll move right on to our Planning Commission questions and the presentations. And I understand that Mike and Keith will be doing the first presentation of the master plan update.
So this one should be going pretty quick because there's not much to update. We just started going on our master plan. We've had our first back meeting on January nineteenth. And we plan to have our first stakeholders meeting in February on the eighth. So things are just starting to move along in that process. We have another, a full year worth of time to put into that, but we are just getting going. So that is essentially the update, there's not much to report yet because we haven't had, we don't have anything figured out yet, so.
Okay. All right.
Have anything to add on that front? Like, we haven't really put together any documents, I think there's a community outreach coming in March, I want to say.
Yeah, I think probably about the only other thing to add is we are coordinating quite closely with City of Tigard on their concept plan on the north side of Beef Bend, so that's going on as well. Tigard is working to complete a concept plan for that side of, north of Beef Bend and by the end of March. So they're moving very quickly, they have some concepts, in fact, we're having, we had a Technical Advisory Committee meeting yesterday to look at the concepts and we're having another one tomorrow to follow up, talk more about some other issues like transportation, so things are gonna start moving pretty quickly.
Speaking of concepts, we still need a name for that area. So if anyone has any cool concept names for that area, put them in the chat box and we'll write them down.
All right, guys, is that? Is that it for you? Okay.
That one.
All right, so next item is on the agenda is the Development Code Update in accordance with HB two thousand one, two thousand three, and that's gonna be a presentation by Herb Works.
That's gonna be Keith.
It's gonna be Keith, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Standing in.
So Herb's Works is our consulting firm for this. It's a relatively small project with a fairly small budget, so they were not scoped to attend every Planning Commission meeting and we felt that this was a good one for the staff to make a presentation, you'll be meeting with some of the Herb's Works folks next month when we have some more detail. So we have some work to review with you, it's mostly Herb's Works has done a first pass at reviewing our code to see what issues they want to, that we should be working on. But we, before we get into that, we do have Anne DeBout from DLCD. DLCD was kind enough to provide the grant for us to do this work. And so we just thought that she could start out by just giving you a little bit of background on House Bill two thousand one from the state's perspective, so Anne, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Keith. Anne DeBout, as Keith mentioned, with Department of Land Conservation Development, and I'm a regional representative for DLCD. We have a dozen around the state, I actually know, I guess we have nine around the state. And my region includes King City, all the cities in Washington County, as well as the county, cities in Columbia County, and I now have Morrow and Umatilla Counties as well, so it's become really interesting lately. And yeah, we're gonna give a fairly high level view, I understood that's what Keith mentioned for House Bill two thousand one. And I'm gonna introduce Robert Mansalillo, he is one of the three planners who worked on the rulemaking and was the team that is helping implement all the House Bill two thousand one legislation, so. Robert, oh, and I want to say too, if it's, if you have questions, please feel free to ask during or after because it may be that there's some details you'd like to hear more about, so feel free to do so. Robert?
Yeah, thanks Anne, good morning everyone, my name is Robert Mansalillo, I'm a housing planner at DLCD. And like Anne said, I was part of the team that wrote the OARs and the model code to implement House Bill two thousand one. So what I'm gonna do is give a pretty high level overview of that, and I have a PowerPoint presentation. If I could have the ability to share my screen, I could go through that.
Rodney, can he share or is it, is it, you need to give him permission?
Nope, I got it.
Okay, great.
Thanks, thanks for that. Let's see. Okay. There we go. All right, so yeah, so this is gonna be a pretty brief, high level intro to House Bill two thousand one. You all may know all of this already, but we'll go through it here, just in case. So House Bill two thousand one was passed.
This meeting is being recorded.
In twenty nineteen, and really the point of House Bill two thousand was, one was to increase access to housing choices. Sorry about that. And so there was two thousand one and two thousand three, we're really just gonna go over two thousand one here in, in this overview. And we have a Housing Programs webpage set up. Rather than trying to copy down that long URL, if you go into Google or any other search engine and just type in DLCD, it'll take you to our homepage and about halfway down the page on the left side, you'll see a Housing tab. And that'll take you to the Housing Programs page. From there, you can get to a lot of different products that we have from two thousand one, two thousand three, different studies that we've, that we've used, that's all there, and some of the information is out of date, but we are in the process of updating that webpage. So House Bill two thousand one, the term missing middle has been talked about quite a bit. And this is a diagram that, we didn't, we didn't create this, but we found it in a publication and thought it was fairly useful to describe really what missing middle housing is. So on either end, you see detached single family houses, on the other side, you see mid or higher rise apartment buildings. In the middle is everything that is considered missing middle, but really, two thousand one focuses on duplex, a fourplex and triplex. And kind of that cottage court or courtyard building, which is what we're calling cottage clusters and townhouses. We didn't really get into the multiplex medium or stacked or live work. Oh, I suppose triplex could be, could be stacked, but the live work wasn't really part of House Bill two thousand one. So here's a map of the cities that are, that have to comply with House Bill two thousand one, broken out into large and medium cities. And you can see for the metro area, it was just about all of them, except for a couple that were under a thousand population, they did not have to comply. And there is one addition to this map, this was from November twenty nineteen. Baker City in Eastern Oregon is now over that ten thousand population threshold, so they have to comply with medium city regulations. And some requirements for medium cities, so a medium city is defined as cities outside Portland Metro with a population of between ten thousand and twenty five thousand. And the requirement here is to allow duplexes on all lots and parcels that allow for single family detached dwellings. Seems fairly straightforward, but the rulemaking process got into quite a lot of detail to really define all the aspects of it, but the language of the bill said, medium cities had to allow for duplexes on all lots and parcels. That, that allowed for detached, single family dwellings. Large cities, this is defined as cities within metro, over one thousand population, and cities outside of metro, twenty five thousand and above. So with this, the allowance for duplex is the same, the large cities have to allow duplexes on every lot and parcel that allows for single family detached dwellings, but then there was also the added, a large city must allow triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses and cottage clusters in areas that allow for single family detached and that in areas there is underlined, because that's all it said, it just said in areas, it didn't tell us what in areas meant. So a lot of the rulemaking process here was defining what, what areas were appropriate for, for these housing types. And large cities must regulate setting and design of middle housing such that the standards don't cause unreasonable cost and delay to the development of middle housing, this also is part of the medium city standards. But again, that unreasonable cost and delay wasn't really defined in the bill itself, so the reasonableness of it really is measured by comparing the cost and delay of a standard, of the standards applied to middle housing to the cost and delay standards that would be applied to other housing types, specifically, single family detached. So what would the cost of a duplex be compared to that of, and the standards be compared to that of a single family detached? So if you had to go through a different permitting process for a duplex, if lot size setbacks had to be different for a duplex, that would be, we considered unreasonable cost and delay. So a lot of the standards for duplexes and some of the others are really tied to the standards for single family detached. And let's see, so, update development codes and land use regulations to comply with House Bill two thousand one. For large cities, it's, large cities have to comply by June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Medium cities, it's June thirtieth of this year, twenty twenty one, so large cities have that extra year to comply. And on December ninth, our commission, LCDSC, adopted the rules for large cities and this included applicability definitions, review process. We also, part of that was a minimum compliance standards that cities can use. And also, there was a model code that cities can use to, to apply these standards. And so the difference between the model code versus the minimum compliance, the model code is a set of specific standards. And it's written that a city can apply it directly, so if a city chooses not to do anything in this process, then the model code would apply directly to them. Or a city could choose to use the model code and then they could just adopt it within their, their code, just as is, if they, if they like everything that's, that's outlined in the model code. Or you can use it in sort of a modular implementation, so if you would prefer to use the minimum standard, minimum compliance standards for some things, you can do that as long as they're within compliance of, of the intent of two thousand one. You can do that for some things, and then you can use some of the model code for other aspects, so if you like the development standards that we have outlined in the model code for, say, triplex, you can take that section and implement it right into your, your code. But if you didn't like it, some of the standards for townhouses or cottage clusters, you can then go to the minimum compliance standards and use that language. So for the minimum compliance standards, it gives a little more flexibility to cities, so it's not as specific as the model code. It defines, it defines those reasonable standards within, within the minimum compliance. And the standards by which the development codes will be measured for compliance within, with House Bill two thousand one intent. So a lot of the standards within the minimum compliance meet the intent of House Bill two thousand one. It just gives cities a little flexibility in, in how they, how they adopt them within their own code. Some implementation logistics, large cities have until June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, to update local codes to comply with House Bill two thousand one. DLCD was given by the legislature some, some money to offer for technical assistance to cities to do some of this work. And that was for, for large and medium cities. And in the current session, the legislature is considering an additional three point five million dollars in assistance to begin July first, twenty twenty one. Our current biennium ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, so that's when the money technically runs out for, for this current cycle. So hopefully, we'll be given more money by the legislature so we can fund more of these projects. And the, the housing team at DLCD or the regional reps or really the whole department is, is ready and available to help with interpretations of the rules, related issues. And our contact information is on the, the housing webpage on DLCD. So with that, that was fairly quick, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Robert, one thing to clarify, because King City is in the Portland metro area, it's considered as a large city, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Hey, Robert, I have a question for you.
Yes.
In, in this large overview scope thing here, one thing I've noticed is that, one thing I've noticed is that you drive around cities and you see where these duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes are being installed, that there's totally inadequate parking for cars. This, does this program talk about that at all? Or are they just saying, if you have a single family home and, and you sell it to a developer and he comes in and builds a fourplex on there, where's the parking? Where's the parking?
That's a, that's a great question, and that's something that we had a lot of discussion on. There are different standards with, between the model code and the minimum compliance, so a city can choose whichever way they want to go there. It, it really comes down to, and there are some specifics in the code that I can't remember off the top of my head, but with, with the minimum standard compliance, it comes down to about one parking space per unit is kind of how it boils down with the fourplex and triplex, and that's also dependent on lot size. So there are some, some standards for, for lot size, if you're talking about a triplex on, say, a ten thousand square foot lot, parking isn't gonna be an issue there, you know, a developer is gonna put in as many parking spaces as they, as they really want because they have the room to do so. If you're talking about a smaller lot size, like a three, four thousand square foot lot size, that, there is a constraint there to allow for parking. So that's where the, the regulation for basically one, one parking space per, per unit came from. With the model code, it's, it's a little more strict, especially with duplexes. So with duplexes, we have in there that a city cannot regulate any parking. So that, that doesn't mean that a developer cannot allow park, or, or propose parking. Again, it depends on the lot size, but it really came down to parking itself is, is really a localized issue around cities, and it could be much different from, between one part of a city and the next. So if there's room to include parking, a developer is more than welcome to add as many parking spaces as they, as they want. A city just for, for duplexes in the model code, cities can't require parking.
Yeah, if I might add, I was gonna clarify, that's right, what Robert said last about cities can't require more than one parking space per unit, but that does not mean that a developer could not provide more parking spaces. And I, one of the many reasons, there were a lot of discussions around parking was, one of the primary reasons why I think state went with that was because it's, it's very costly to require additional parking for housing. So that was one, one of the many considerations that was taken into account.
Yeah, I, I understand that part, I understand that, you know, developers want to sell the most houses that they can and cram as many onto a block, you know, onto a lot as they can, because, you know, parking spaces don't really make them any money. It's just, as I, as my niece is part of a program for teaching kids music and acting and things in downtown Portland. And when we first moved over here from Redmond, Oregon, about eleven years ago, we could park virtually right next to the facility that this, that this, where these kids were performing. And we could, we could, you know, we only maybe had to walk a half a block, now we're walking eight blocks to get to the same facility. And it just seems like to me that this is not a problem that's gonna get better as more and more single family homes are demolished and these bigger buildings are put in, and, you know, the bottom, you know, I, I think one thing, I think one thing that the state of Oregon believes is that everybody's gonna ride a bus to work. Everybody's gonna take the train, everybody's gonna get on their bicycle. And that is just one hundred percent totally foolish thinking that that's gonna how everything's gonna work. I mean, once gas powered cars are gone, then you're gonna have electric powered cars. It, it, I mean, there's nothing we can do about the King City thing, there's absolutely nothing we can do about that, but you guys are in the planning, you know, you guys are making the rules and the regs, and I, I, it's a problem that's bad now, it's gonna only get worse unless something is done about that, and I'm, you know, I'm sorry, the developers won't be able to make as much money as they want, you know, that's just the life in the big city. So, okay, I'm gonna quit ranting and raving, all right?
Yeah, no, thank you for those comments, we, we heard many of the similar comments during the rulemaking and yeah, parking, parking is an issue, it, it always will be, but we felt like in order to promote these housing types and to actually get them built, we felt like this was kind of a, a fair mill ground for, for the parking issue.
Understand.
Are there other questions or concerns or no?
Well, I just have a comment on the parking thing because I think out here in the burbs, you get a kind of different perspective on parking, and sometimes in some neighborhoods, it's a little challenging to find a parking spot, but it's nothing like, you know, going downtown Portland or something and having to park like two or three blocks away from your destination, you know? It's a, you know, you might not be able to park in front of your street, but if you cross over and go down, you know, two houses or one house normally, you can usually find a parking spot, so I think there's the perception of folks out here in the suburbs that, you know, I should be able to park in front of my house, and if I can't park in front of my house, then there's a parking problem. And, you know, sometimes that gets a little misconstrued in, in what the real problem is. Now, I'm not saying we don't have problems, because we do. If you were to go down Roseberry, that's a neighborhood where we granted a, a variance to the number of, or the setback from the street, I think, and that created a situation where people can't park in their driveway. And of course, no one uses their garage, so then they're all put out on the street, so it creates a big issue, but you know, it, we do have our parking problems, but it's nothing compared to what we see in like downtown Portland or something like that.
Well, I, I agree with you, Mike, but you know, if we don't do something, then that we will eventually have more problems like we have over where you're talking about. And, you know, the neighbors there were concerned that the people that are living in the new development are gonna be parking the cars out on their street, and you know, the couple of times I've driven over there, that street's pretty darn full of cars just with the people that live there right now, that doesn't even count what's gonna be happening with the new development, so, yeah, it's just, it's just it's just a problem that's not gonna go away. And, you know, I think, I think it helps make cities, I think it helped make cities more unlivable. So, okay, I'm gonna.
We appreciate your comments, thank you. No, you're right, it's not gonna go away, it will remain controversial for some time. For a long time.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else for the DLCD folks, thank you very much for that presentation, that was very helpful, it makes mine shorter, you explained a lot that I was going to get into. One thing, John, parking will certainly be something that we're gonna be talking about as we go through the master plan work for West King City. You know, some of this with the parking versus onsite versus on street, we have to look at the entire context and just figure out what really is going to be workable. Another consideration we've had, and we've been talking with the Twin Valley Fire and Rescue about this issue off and on, is just maintaining emergency access on streets. If people start parking illegally in fire lanes and that sort of thing, then we have another problem, so it's certainly on our radar and we'll be, we'll be taking a look at that some more. But I think what's important though, what they're saying about the state's requirement is you don't set the floor level so high that developers are required to provide parking whether they really need it or not, that they can just make a market decision on what they need to provide for what they're building. And to a certain extent, so I was just trying to get that balance, and this is one, one of the topics where it's difficult to find that balance. So we'll be, we'll be working on that some more. So let me move on then to the, what we, what we have with our project, so what I indicated is that we did get a grant from, technical assistance grant from DLCD to do some work to comply with House Bill two thousand one. We have Herb's Works under contract, they started in December, and they have finished, so if you take a look at your Planning Commission packet, it's the first document right after the agenda. You'll see a King City, King City Middle Housing Overview Document. And this was provided by Herb's Works and it gives a summary of the project itself, and you'll see once you get into that, just the, the bottom of the first page of that, there is a four task project that's gonna be done by the end of May. What you have in your packet is a final draft for Task One, which is a code audit, and so what Herb's Works did is they went through our community development code and took a look at what House Bill two thousand one requires, and then compared it with what our requirements are in the community development code today. And they have highlighted places where in their assessment, our code is not complying with House Bill two thousand and one in areas where we need to, to address either allowing duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes in certain zones. I think there were some issues related to parking and so on, so they just provided a list of the, of the issues that we need to be paying attention to. So that's really the, the important first part. What I would also like to add on the audit is, in conjunction with this, the city is starting an audit of the entire community development code. There are parts of it that don't work very well, and we also wanted to make sure we were getting prepared to, to have a code update that works well with our master plan area that, that of course, we're starting to work on there. I think initially for our, our community development code, we're not seeing that we need to make any really significant overall changes to the code, the organization is basically fine and so forth. But one of the areas that we think we do need to make some amendment is for our zoning districts. For those of you who've been, looked at the code very much, you'll notice that there's a difference from one residential zone to another as far as what the format is, what the regulations are, sometimes the setback and use requirements don't really make that much sense, it's partly because the, the zones have been developed over time in different contexts and for different purposes. in different contexts and for different purposes. And so what we would like to do is can rearrange the zoning districts so that they're easier to follow. So perhaps you haven't done this, but if you look at a lot of other zoning ordinances, for example, they'll combine residential zones and they'll talk about them as a group. And then instead of having a lot of narrative that talks about what the, what side yard setbacks are and what the design standards are and so forth. They will be grouped together and the standards will be summarized in a table. So that you, you know, for example, you have allowed uses going down one access. And then you go to the different zones across and it just says, is it allowed in this zone or not? And it's, it's much easier to read and to scan. So we're, we're thinking that as we make the amendments to fulfill the, the requirements of House Bill 2001, we will also be amending the zoning districts so that they're easier to read and they work together and make sense together as, as opposed to each one being a one-off thing that somebody did in 1965. And then another one's a one-off thing that was done in 85 and another one in 2000. So that's going to be, so we're going to be working on that as well. So that is really would take us to task two, where we're talking about draft amendments. And this will be in February at your planning commission at the end of the month. That Herb's Works will come back with some ideas on how we put the amendments in place, what types of amendments might they be and how they would be organized. So this, I anticipate it'll be your first peek at some ideas on how we would reorganize our zoning district requirements that are in the community development code. Then following that, we will have some refinement in these amendments. So we'll come up with some more specific ideas on what exactly these code amendments will be to satisfy House Bill 2001. My guess is we're going to have some others that are sort of inextricably linked. And we'll be making some other amendments that just aren't technically House Bill 2001 pieces, but we just need to do them at the same time to just make sense of it all. And then we would have some public review. And then finally, we would have a public hearing to consider these final amendments. Say at the end of May. And then we'll probably have some additional hearings to actually adopt these requirements in the summer of, 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 of this summer. It is 21 already. So going through this document, we just have the code audit. On page five of your planning commission packet of the whole PDF, you can see the schedule. So we're here in January, we have another planning commission meeting then on the 24th. And then we're anticipating that we'll have a planning commission then each month in March, April. And in May then to talk about this project as we go forward. And then the idea being that we would have a planning commission hearing either to consider this for adoption on the, you know, if everything's moving along really well, maybe it's on the 26th of May, but otherwise it probably would be the end of June. And then going to the city council. And going to page six of the packet then, now you have the, the audit itself. And what it does, it gives an overview of some of the requirements. Some of those are what Robert already went over for you. And then they have some, when we get to about page 10 of your PDF or the packet. Oh no, excuse me. Now we have a little more description. I'm on page 11 of the packet, gives a table showing the different housing types that correspond with the illustration that Robert showed. And then it just talks about which zones that we have to pay attention to when we're modifying these things. And so this would be page 12 of the packet. So we'll be looking at the, the single family residential zone, the apartment townhouse zone, small lot and attached residential, which is R9, that's the one that you find out, find out in the West King City area. The attached residential zone, R12, also in the West King City area. And then we'll also be looking at our multifamily residential zone. We have an R15 zone, which actually doesn't apply on the ground anywhere in the city, but does exist on the books. We have an R24 zone, which applies to the multifamily development and some things down at the, near the Twelton River. And then we also have a new mixed use residential zone that you folks, I think mostly recall passing recently. It's a mixed use that allows for some commercial residential. And that one zone allowed is found on the Northwest corner of Fisher and 131st, still undeveloped. So we'd be looking at those because all of those zones have a residential component. And the summary provides a zoning map for you folks for, just for reference. And then they really just, for the rest of it, they come up with some recommendations and observations about where we either comply with the rules for House Bill 2001 and where we either definitely don't or likely don't. So they're highlighting those areas for us where we really need to be paying some attention. So this will really set up our work for next month when we talk about possible ways to address this. And and I'm sure parking will be part of that conversation. As I think it'll probably continue to be while we do the master plan as well. So there are a number of places where we have zones that are in pretty good shape as far as House Bill 2001. There's others that are not very good. Another thing that I would like to point out is that different subdivisions or developments can have CCNRs, which might have some requirements or restrictions on what housing types might be. You could build in a certain development and so forth. And this bill does not roll those back, so it does not supersede those. It recognizes that those exist and will continue to exist. We did already put a requirement in our code that says that you cannot create a new development with covenants and restrictions that would exclude these housing types. But so for some places, and I don't, I'm not sure about the Highlands. King City Civic Association has some requirements that are in place in their CCNRs. So those would not change or be overruled by this. So I think that it'd be fair to say that these requirements are going to make by far the biggest difference in our master plan area and will probably have a very limited impact in our existing city. Primarily because almost all of our properties are fully developed. Most of them are developed on small lots already with pretty limited redevelopment potential. So I think it's really going to be, make the major difference in our master plan area. So I think with that, I'll, I'll, I'll stop and see if you folks have any questions about either the overall scope of this project or this first piece that's been produced by Herb's Works for the audit. I apologize. I wasn't, I was reading along here in my packet, but I wasn't putting it up on the screen there. So I'm just trying to put it up there so people can see those areas that Herb's Work highlighted. So any questions or comments or?
Question, how much, you think we should spend like really delving into this information for next time? Like how should we, how familiar?
You're hard to hear.
And is there areas in particular? I mean, there's 120 pages here, but how, how much do we need as planning commission, commissioners to have a good understanding of all of this content? And can you give us kind of highlights on where we should spend our time really kind of understanding?
I think in reviewing the audit, the audit is relatively small. This packet is large. You have a lot of things that have to do with the, with our next agenda item, which is about the transportation system plan. I would spend the most time taking a look at the tables with the colors. It gives a summary of where they think we comply and where they think we don't. So it gives you an idea of the scope of how much we need to get into. Like I said, there are some zones that are pretty close to being in compliance now and there are others that are not. And so it'd be to just take a look at all those. And I think some of this too will become clearer when we have some ideas presented to you next month about how we would address these. And how we would organize these. But I think we'll, we'll be looking at organize, reorganizing the zone districts in a way that they're combined. So that a lot of the regulatory information is presented in a table format. So it's a lot easier to digest than trying to, our current code drives me nuts because it's all narrative and even the numbers are spelled out. You know, so you, you know, a dimensional requirement is on a certain page and you can't see it because it's written out. Which, you know, who knew, who thought that was a good idea? But anyway, we can make that so it's a much more user friendly. And I think it'll be a lot easier to absorb. So I think if you just look at this and kind of keep these things in mind, I think some of this will make more sense when we have some of the, the ideas for how we address these problems. And you can look at the audit and the proposed ideas for solutions next month. And so we'll have that in your packet for the 24th. So yeah, packet will be at least a week ahead of the 24th. And so Annie, if you don't mind my interjecting here, the problem is, is that we have a lot of planning activity going on at the same time. And so it's all relevant. Everything in this packet probably needs your eyes on at some point in time. And there's going to be a lot more coming. So we're going to have, this is just a taste. Everything from the, after you get past page 20 of the Herb's Work package is all TSP stuff. And there's going to be more coming in the very near future. And then on top of that, there's going to be master plan stuff added onto it. So break out the reading specs and we'll get going on this stuff. It's going to be a long haul. Yeah, nobody should have any problem with insomnia. Just pick this up if you're having trouble. Yeah, but I think that we're, Herb's Works, I believe, did a good job in summarizing a fairly complex topic, going through and, and figuring out where we have some code problems and so forth, and reducing it into tables. So you can easily scan those and, and see how we're doing well and how we're not doing so well. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. Hi Keith, this is Lori. I just had one, just a kind of, am I kind of in the right direction here? Just in form of, from what I'm hearing, you know, one of the questions they raise is, is what makes more sense for, for each city? Whether you go with the minimum compliance or you use the model code. What I'm kind of hearing from you all is that King City is looking more to do, to do the compliance in our own way, following the guidelines, but not taking the, the minimum or using the model. Does that sound, sound right?
Yes. Model codes are really good, particularly if you don't have much staff or budget to deal with something that's going to come down as a requirement really soon. And it also gives everybody a good idea what a, an acceptable code would look like. But at the same time, a model code often is difficult to insert in your particular code and format and everything. And you typically have to do a fair amount of editing just to make it fit the numbering system or whatever it is you have. I think we'll be looking at the model code. We'll be looking at the minimum compliance standards. We'll have more of a discussion about that next month. But yes, I'd say it's fair that we're, we're going to come up with our own code. Using the model code as an example, but then really focusing on what those minimum compliance standards are. And then of course, what's the context for King City? What's going to work the best for us? And along that line, we also have to be cognizant of all the changes that are coming over the next 12 months as well. So we're trying to make sure that whatever we do stays in line with what we're trying to accomplish in the expansion area as well. All right. Any other last minute questions? And then we can move on to the thick of it here. I just have one final comment, and that is, I think that King City has a really great and unique opportunity in that we're doing this code work at the same time that we're planning for arguably the most significant plan the city's ever done with the Western King City piece. And so to be able to bring those together at the same time is, and the TSP that we're going to get into next is a very unique opportunity. Most of the time you're trying to fix stuff and you've got a hodgepodge of stuff that's already there and expectations and regulations that are already in place. In this case, we're starting with a blank slate and we can bring all these things together. And if we're thoughtful about it, I think we could have a really good result.
Thank you all. I think DLCD will maybe leave before the TSP unless you need us to stay for some reason.
It'll be fascinating, Anne. I don't know. What else, what else do you have going today?
I'm happy to stay if I need to. I don't think Robert needs to stay.
Yeah. No, but thank, thank you, thank you to you and Robert for helping us out this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad to help you anytime that you'd like.
Yeah, thank you everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, so then Mike and Keith, you're going to do the TSP information?
Sure thing. So we'll just jump into the TSP. We have a number of documents provided for you from the transportation system plan. We have, in effect, we have the TSP outreach summary. We had about 400 responses from the survey and the online comments. Those are summarized in the engagement survey. That's the first document that you would see in your packet. The issues ranged from concerns at 99W and B Ben, 99W and Fisher, Fisher Road Extension, what becomes of B Ben, trail connections, pedestrian walks. If you've had a chance to read through that document, it provides a nice, clean summary of some of those comments that we've received and kind of just synthesizes that data to something that we can read through and get a good idea of what those concerns and comments are. Of course, we're all well aware that Fisher Road Extension was a prime topic. Sorry. Was a prime topic of conversation and there was a lot of opposition against that. So you know, we're going to continue to see that for the time being. We don't even know what the status of Fisher Road is going to look like yet. We don't know if that's going to be a primary objective of one of the models. We don't, there's a lot that we don't know yet. We have ideas, we have, we can kind of do a back of the napkin concept and draw it up and it's going to show that if we don't do Fisher Road, we're going to have failing intersections. And that's going to cost us a lot more. So we know that, we knew back in the concept planning days that Fisher Road was going to be kind of like the backbone of our infrastructure going to come in through there. So we still know that it's a critical infrastructure piece. What it's going to function as, what it's going to look like, those are things that we can figure out as we go. But that's not what we want to focus on primarily. I mean, there's a lot more going on here. There's a north-south connectivity along Roy Rogers. There's north-south connectivity along 99W. And what does 99W look like afterwards? What kind of concepts can we come up with that provide nice connections for biking and pedestrian walk-through? Do we incorporate golf carts? What does that look like? And, and at what levels are those pathways used? So as we walk through some of this stuff, Keith and I are going to go over some of the tasks that we've completed throughout the TSP and things that we're working on. Our primary objective here is to kind of go over some of the goals, some of the visions and policies. Keith has done a nice job kind of summarizing some of these issues and put it together like a nice little memo. Keith, do you have that memo? I mean, I can pull it up, but yep, that's the one. Keith and I, we, we provided a number of comments over to DKS on what some of our visions are for the city and what we've heard the council and commissioners mentioned to us as well. And so we put that over to DKS and we got that. Some were, some were taken into consideration, some were not. I think we need to reiterate some of them. So uh, we need to make sure that whatever we're working on is, takes into consideration the, the viewpoints and goals of what the council and commissioners are. The other thing, you know, Mr. Myers mentions in the comments, uh, you know, to be sensitive about uh, what these impacts are on the people that actually live out there currently and what those future impacts are going to be. Mike, if I'm not summing that up, you know, properly, you go, go ahead and throw in there and I'll, I'll be happy to mention it and continue on. But um, you know, that there are a lot of sensitivities on Fisher Road especially. Mostly just the impact it's going to have on existing residents. And I think uh, we've taken that into consideration along the way and, and we're trying to find ways that maybe we can reduce that impact or limit that impact or uh, ways around all the, all the impacts that, that this development or expansion is going to have. Keith, you want to take it and maybe I'm running in circles here a little bit, but I'll pass it off to you.
Okay, thank you. So with the, with the transportation system plan, we've talked to you folks about this before. Uh, just give you a little summary of where we are. So the project has um, eight tasks. And we're about halfway through. Uh, so the first task was project management and getting a, a technical advisory committee in place and setting up an organizational structure. And that of course has been done. Public and stakeholder involvement, and you have a summary of what's been done to date in the packet that Mike talked about. Policy planning framework, a summary of, so they took a look at the relevant plans that might be, you know, have some influence on the, on the TSP planning. And then task four is land use refinement. And Lanny's analysis, and we had some existing conditions. That has already been done. As you may recall, there was another market analysis pretty much to confirm the land use assumptions that we had in the uh, concept plan. Just to make sure those are real so that when we do the transportation planning, we're making the correct land use and transportation assumptions. And then there was an urban design uh, guidebook and action plan, which is also attached to your packet. And this offers some examples and ideas for future development in the master plan area. And it also goes into three different uh, other planned communities that are maybe not, I suppose it'd be fair to say at least a similar scale to what we're talking about here. And just looked at some of the ideas and what worked well and didn't work well with some of those. And it was Bethany and Villebois and Northwest Crossing and Bend. Uh, and so that I think is going to be a really good reference piece for us to look at as we finish the TSP. But also as we do our master plan work, because I think there's a lot of um, uh, lessons learned and information there that'll be valuable to us to consider as we go forward. So the remaining tasks that we have now, we're at task five and we have a number of these memos that DKS has issued. Uh, and it's mostly to establish the transportation uh, goals and policies. And I'm not sure why they did this, but they had a separate one for goals memo. And then they did another one that kind of reiterated the draft goals and then they added some, not policies, but objectives. We still don't have their memo on transportation infrastructure standards, which would be, I think, for, you know, what, what street cross-sections should be for different types of streets and which ones they are and so on. They have another memo in here about transportation measures and project prioritization framework. And then finally, an evaluation methodology memorandum. In my opinion, some of those latter ones are a little hard to deal with because we don't know what we have, which is going to be task six, transportation, which is the existing conditions and needs analysis. So um, Mike may be looking at this in a different way, but I think that we try to get these in some kind of a good draft form. But then we loop back after we actually have a better sense for what our, what our existing situation is and what our needs are. To go back and, and just take another look. Do we have this all right? As Mike indicated though, we did make some comments earlier about some things and they, they don't seem to be reflected in these DKS ones. But I, I think for today, what would be important either today or if you have some time to look at it in the next week. If you have any comments about the goal statements that they have, the objectives that they have. Um, and then also what they have for what they're calling performance measures. Uh, do those seem to hit everything that you're, uh, that seem important to you? So in the packet.
I think I've got that starting back.
Yeah, this would start on page 43 in your packet.
I'm going to get there in just one second. Right now I'm kind of just going through. Is there any more of the survey stuff? Anyone wants to kind of see, you should have them in your packet if you want to go back and look at some of these things to kind of identify what exactly were the, uh, the high points? I'm almost to the end of this right now. Kind of see the last couple graphs. And then we're going to jump into.
So uh, I'll just add one thing about the survey. One thing I think that was interesting, there seems to be a fair amount of interest in places that are walkable, places where you can ride a bike, seemed to be a fair amount of interest in that. And I can't say that when we had the open house out at the park, there were a lot of people walking by, uh, people on bikes and everything. So uh, it seems like at least getting around the neighborhood locally, people like to do those sorts of things. Also Tigerd was finding the same in their survey work for their concept plan on, on the north side of Beef Ben. That there seems to be a lot of interest in having neighborhoods that are more walkable and bikeable than perhaps what we have in some areas. So then, yeah, so these memos that we have, so we have one that talks about a possible vision statement. Sample transportation vision on page 44 of the packet. Yeah, right there. And then they have some sample transportation, well, they call it goals and objectives. And on this memo, they just have the um, uh, uh, goals. Uh, maybe we should just skip to the next memo because that has both. Uh, so then starting on page 46. We have the vision repeated again. We have the goals and now we have some objectives for consideration as well. So we wanted, we wanted you folks to at least take a look at those. Uh, think about those either right now, if you have any comments, or if you do say in the next week, just jot them down, email them to us. Uh, but we would like to get, I'd say a final draft of these. But I think the important thing is if you think that we're missing something here on uh, uh, or have questions about any of the ones that DKS has proposed in this memo.
Lost Mark. Yeah, I think one of the main, one of the bigger responses that was surprising is uh, how often people will bike around the community. I think that was kind of surprising in the survey. Considering that, you know, there's not a lot of bikeability on Beef Ben, especially past uh, the Bonneville lines there. So uh, but we did get a lot of response that people do do a lot of biking around.
Yeah, my sense, my sense is a lot of it's happening in, in uh, West King City area, you know, west of 131st. Because um, the street system, along with the paths are pretty interconnected. Pretty quiet residential streets, uh, not unlike the streets I used when I was a kid riding around. So um, I think uh, people feel pretty comfortable riding their bike, at least around their house, over to the park. That type of thing. Gets a little rougher sledding when you get out on the major streets though. But 131st is way better than it was. So I, I, I don't, uh, does anybody have any comments or thoughts about this? Or you want to just think about it? Maybe if you, something occurs to you, we'll, we can include that?
Keith, I, I have one question. Does the state, are, are there any state laws that say we need like two major transportation corridors? Or could we just rely on one? And I'm, and what I'm saying is we got Fisher and we got Beef Ben. So if Beef Ben was bigger and could everybody kind of drive up to Beef Ben and get to where they need to go? Instead of having Beef Ben be a little smaller and then try to make Fisher longer and a little wider to, I mean, does the state, does the state say you have to have two lines, two lines of communication, two main lines?
No, there's no requirement for that. I think really what we're dealing with are, are trade-offs. If all of the traffic that we get from this new area needs to rely on Beef Ben Road to get anywhere, we'll obviously have more cars on Beef Ben. We'll also have busier intersections as you go along Beef Ben. So that has traffic implications. If we don't have Fisher going through, the people can, at least for local trips, east-west in particular, that they don't have to rely on Beef Ben to do that. We're going to be getting into uh, the Fisher Road alignment in a lot more detail here with the master plan. Uh, as you folks know, we do have some uh, geographic issues to deal with on, on the alignment of the road and so forth. So we're going to be looking into that more. So I, our concept plan is certainly calling for Fisher Road to be a through connection street. I think it still will, will be talking about uh, how much traffic might wind up on Fisher Road versus Beef Ben Road. And what, what the trade-offs are if we don't have Fisher Road or uh, what does that mean for Beef Ben and vice versa? So it's, it's really just how, how can you accommodate that east-west circulation the most efficiently? And also in the most cost-effective manner, because uh, either street can potentially be expensive and widening Beef Ben, say to five lanes, isn't going to be cheap either. So um, we really need to try and come up with something that's going to work um, well. Uh, another issue that we do have with Beef Ben is if you make it a really large street, it becomes more and more of a barrier. Uh, we had some comments during the open house of parents indicating that it was really tough for the kids at Deer Creek Elementary that are on the north side of Beef Ben to just cross the street to get to school. And that's with it as it is now, not with uh, you know, a lot more cars. So uh, there, there are a lot of trade-offs, but there is no requirement.
Well, and the other thing I think that we've looked at is providing a number of a well-connected street network that distributes the load more evenly so that it's not just all traffic forced to Fisher or all traffic forced to Beef Ben. It can, like the local traffic can just disperse amongst the local streets. And we can put like uh, like traffic circles or traffic calming devices throughout the growth area that makes these as like kind of undesirable transportation roads for people trying to do cut-throughs. You know, um, there's ways of making it kind of undesirable for that sort of activity. And push the through, keep the through traffic on the arterials and allow our local traffic to use our local streets. You know, the, all these things are considerations that we use as we go along, so.
And uh, so this, getting back to my comment about this being such a great opportunity to be doing the master planning work plus the TSP at the same time is we can have this back and forth conversation while we're talking about land use concepts for the master plan. And then what does that mean in terms of the TSP? We, we have this back and forth conversation as both these plans go forward. So that's going to really help us quite a bit. Also with Beef Ben being a Washington County road, we have, uh, Washington County, of course, has, is a player in how all this pans out. But I think Mike makes a really good point though about the interconnected uh, aspect of streets. I mean, even in West King City, we tried really hard not to have cul-de-sacs if we didn't need one. And if we did have a cul-de-sac, we often provided a pathway connection. And um, I think that's really contributed to the walkability of the neighborhood. And then also, we don't have traffic all fun and layout on one particular street to get out of the whole neighborhood. So it seems to keep everybody happy, including TVFNR, so. Any other questions or comments?
I, I will just make one comment that if I did an overview of all of the documents here. And, and I have to say that the examples of, of the Villebois and the North, the Crossing and the Bethany were very, very interesting. And there's a lot of information in there that I think would be useful to us as we go forward. And especially how some of them have dealt with traffic issues and talked about traffic issues. So I think everyone should really take the time to look at those uh, profiles and examples pretty, pretty carefully. It's, it's really fascinating.
Keith, I, I do have a question from Mike, Michael Myers. Um, I've seen several references in the TSP being completed by summer 2021. Is that correct? Late summer?
Yeah, it will be uh, so right now our timeline for the transportation system plan is June of 2021. For our purposes, what it will be is a recommend to adopt. And then what will happen is, is it will get incorporated with our master plan and adopted in December of 2021. Hopefully, according to our schedule anyways.
Yes, and the idea is that as the master plan's completed, if that means we need to go back and revisit an aspect of the TSP to make sure that they dovetail well together, we'll have the opportunity to do that.
And I'm almost to the part where we're going to jump into the herbs works guidebook and we can kind of just zoom through that. Right now we're kind of looking at, we're still going through. I'm a little bit slow on the screen here, just trying to catch up. But if everyone's kind of good with where we're at, I'll move through these things really quick and we can get into the herbs work guidebook. Cause that's where, you know, we've talked about some of the fun things that we get to do in the master plan, like work with the architectural designs. Work with how the street networks flow together, look at how parks are there. What kind of community layout are we looking for to make sure that the community itself is built to the type and standards that we're looking for? And I can just, I'll zoom ahead to that. So if everyone's fine with that, we'll just kind of skip over this uh, traffic analysis data. These were the main intersections that we had to study as part of our uh, transportation system plan to figure out what the impacts were going to be. So this is the start of the guidebook. And as it goes through, we looked at the three studies here. Villebois, Northwest Crossing and Bethany. I will say that we have a slight advantage over the Villebois scenario because we have exposure at Roy Rogers and Beef Ben. On our situation is a lot closer to the Northwest Crossing situation. And probably even has a better chance of success than even Bethany. And Bethany has turned out to be a pretty nice little area. So um, when you look at our particular area, especially on the far west over here, where Beef Ben and Roy Rogers in the intersection. And where we're talking about doing the town center, we really have a good opportunity here to incorporate some employment land, to incorporate some uh, commercial aspects of the city and really create a, a town center feel, a community center feel. And the question is, how do we go about incorporating that and then creating a connect, a connection? So the people over in the uh, original portions of King City don't feel like this is something that they don't belong to. Because what our goal is to basically create a, it's center, a community center out here where everyone can feel like it's their community and take pride. Where everyone can feel like it's their community and take pride in that community. So we looked at these scenarios, Villebois is I think our first one that we looked at. And through Villebois, you see the way that they've designed, or I'm going to skip ahead here really quick. So hopefully you guys have all had a chance to kind of review a little bit of this. But I like maps, so I'm going to zip ahead to the map of Villebois area here, but you can kind of see some of the concepts. Northwest Crossing here, Villebois here. This is North Bethany, this is Bethany as well, the Bethany Town Center area. But here's a map of, this is Villebois, I believe. Nope, this is not.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so this is the Villebois Town Center and they've kind of created a radiating. Community so that it's less dense on the outside and gets more dense towards the center. And they started their development on the outer edges and then worked their way in toward the center. And in that, their densities increased. Ours kind of does something similar to that when you look at the Beef Bend South area. On how we basically start in that area near where Alice Farm and Garden is, and then kind of radiate out. At least that's kind of what our concept plan called for. So those would be our most dense areas. And then as we get closer to the Bonneville Lines, like the density of those areas goes down. Like as we get closer to the river, as we get closer to the Bonneville Lines, densities decrease. So our high, our high volume areas are usually where Beef Bend Road is or Roy Rogers. So what Villebois Center, though, is so isolated in here, they've had trouble kind of getting their commercial core to take off. So they really had some struggles there. With the way that ours is designed, we're going to have much more exposure from the main thoroughfares on the west, which would be Roy Rogers and to the north, which would be Beef Bend. So where Villebois has struggled, we might actually do pretty well. And I think Northwest Crossing is a closer example of kind of what we're proposing on doing. So I'm going to zip ahead through the Villebois here. There's a lot of good stuff. I encourage you to go ahead and take a look and read through it. They, they did a lot of. Really nice features in the Villebois development, a lot of linear parks, nice architectural designs. I think they have like an architectural design guidebook that kind of, I think they have an architectural council or committee as well to kind of review developments. Their town center area here, this is something I really like. This is actually the Villebois Town Center right here. You notice that they have the ballards here and then they have like a zero curb effect between the, the walking areas and the street. They have the ability to cut off this whole town center. So if I go back up here to this map, they have the ability to just kind of cut off all the roads to their, their town square right in this area. And it really creates a place where they can hold like a community event and traffic gets funneled around. And they can just create a like, kind of like a town fair event in the center of the town. But the streets themselves still function on an everyday basis. But if they need to, they can cut them off and, and create that walkability and they call it festive street and town service. This is Villebois Town Center again. But you see the densities go up. Here's where they're talking about their architectural, architectural pattern book for Villebois. So you can see some of that stuff as well. They used urban renewal, they're a much larger city. I don't know if urban renewal necessarily works for our size, but it might be some, might be a tool that we look into in the future. This one is Northwest Crossing. And Northwest Crossing has a commercial area coming off the circle right here through this area down toward their Central Park. But this is their town square area and then they have some lighter commercial areas around. Believe, but as you'll see with Northwest Crossing, they had a main street coming through right here. This is very similar to what Roy Rogers would look like for us on Beef Bend. So they had that visibility coming right off of the main street, coming into their little town center and park area. So theirs has been real, relatively successful, a lot, their commercial always takes a little bit longer to come online. But once it does, it really created a nice town square. So that's why we really like the, the Northwest Crossing examples, because it's really similar to what we're proposing ourselves. You know, and working with that, you know, Keith has been sitting in with Tigerd on the River Terrace Development and what they're kind of planning up there. And, you know, they're proposing a number of smaller commercial and employment areas and connecting with visibility through Beef Bend. So when we look at how River Terrace or Roy Rogers and Beef Bend interact, we may want to keep that in mind as well as consider that. To the northwest of our area, Tigerd is planning a large community park there. And so how do we, how do we link that community park? I think Northwest Crossing has a, has this kind of directional street coming off of their main town's circle area and their commercial core. We could think about something like that, just kind of in a different direction, maybe it goes this way toward Roy Rogers and Beef Bend. But anyways, just give us a good idea of what is successful and what we can use. The one thing about Northwest Crossing is it's a little bit more spread out. So it's not as dense as what we were proposing. And I think the Villebois scenario is closer in form and style. To what is being projected for our area and also the Tigerd area and River Terrace. But I think the benefit that we have is our exposure to those main arterials. So when we look at, but we can learn a lot from this too. There's a lot of good mixes of uses and, and lessons learned that they use for their town center. And definitely things that we can pick up on. I really liked some of the scenarios coming out of the Northwest Crossing when they're. You know, the town prototype, the village prototype. I think we need to have something similar to that. I think Erbs Works kind of calls us out pretty well and kind of pulls out some of their, the lessons learned on, on this particular version. And I think if we pay attention to the way that they've used roundabouts, how they've done their mixed uses. I think this is probably a bit of a problem, I think, for a lot of people, the 465 to 895 range. So, you know, hopefully we can find a way to create some affordable living within our area. I know that the cost of development is continuing to skyrocket and it's not getting any cheaper. So there are some challenges there that this commission will face and the city for that matter. Is there any questions so far before I go to the next one? Kind of getting to the end of the Northwest Crossing version.
Yeah, Mike, for the Northwest Crossing, have we gotten any information from the planners about how those, the arterial looks kind of like where it cuts through? Which we're kind of looking at possibly Fisher? How that traffic, is there a lot of cut through traffic through it? Do we know?
Um, you mean, once it goes past the park this direction?
Yeah, I mean, just, I guess in general through that area where the one arterial looks like to the south. Goes through the neighborhood, are they getting that cut through traffic? Because that to me looks very similar, like you were saying, to what we're possibly looking at.
So if we look at this, you mean Galveston Road here? So this is the map of, this is the map of. Hopefully I'm not too big for everyone's screen. But you have two main arterials, actually Northwest Crossing is kind of centered between three arterials. There's a Galveston Road, I believe, down here. And then there's Mount Washington coming up this way. And then there was this third road up top, which I can't remember what the name was on that one. So they had plenty of exposure, they had exposure coming off through this direction, that exposure coming off of Washington Street, not so much off Galveston down here. But for their main exposure, it was coming off of Washington in this circle. And so what they did for their area was do a number of traffic circles to kind of reduce the cut through traffic. So you'll notice they have a traffic circle coming off of Galveston up here. And then they had a traffic circle on Washington coming into the commercial core. And then this is a rather large park area that has like a traffic circle going around it as well. So they incorporated just a number of traffic circles in order to kind of alleviate some of those cut through traffic issues. Sorry, I must have had it wrong. This is Galveston, this is Newport Road, sorry. Does that kind of answer some of your questions, Mark?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, hopefully those traffic circles, maybe it'd be if they have any recent traffic studies through this development. It'd be nice to see if we can, if, how these circles did alleviate. Or reduce any cut through traffic through that development.
Sure. We can definitely ask, Keith, who, was it? FCS that did the initial assessment for the Northwest Crossing and then Erbs Works kind of on their coattails or vice versa?
I think Erbs Works was in on it earlier. Putting together the concept and the house mix and the design requirements, I think they were in earlier. I don't know who the traffic engineer was, now maybe DKS would even know. It could help us as part of the TSP, they could, they would know if we have any studies out there.
Okay, I'll, I'll write that in as a question. Though we can, we can pose over to DKS for you, Mark, and try to get you some answers on that. Okay, so our, with that, we'll go on to Bethany, North Bethany. Is our, our third example. And if you've had the chance to go up there, this one's pretty close, just north of two, two seventeen and twenty six. You know, the Bethany Town Center is off on the right as you go up. And actually it's now on the left too. It was originally started on the right, but now they have the, I think there's a Providence there, there's local fitness center on the corner. And the developer, I think his name is Kim, he just, it took him a while to get this online, but he's, he stuck to his guns and did a great job, I think. And that town center is really starting to take off. They, they have a grocery anchor in there along with some local retail. There's a number of mixes at that town center. And there's also a, of some vertical development there as well. So there's some town homes and apartment complexes near, near that area. I think they're condos, I could be wrong, Keith, you, you might know more on that. But. As you come into North Bethany, it's actually before you get to the main development section. And. It's down, gosh, I'm trying to remember where that town center is. I think it's right down in this general vicinity, right, Keith? And then Washington County is trying to do a main street within the development itself. And that has not taken off yet, if I recall, right? But we'll show you pictures here. Some of the issues, they've, they've had a little bit of a struggle getting their main street. They have a linear main street coming off of Kaiser Road. And this is all in the new area here. The actual Bethany Town Center that we're going to show you pictures of is a little bit to further, further south. I think it's closer to this Springville Road, it's south of Springville Road intersection. This might be it, actually, right here. For that, that Kim development, isn't that it right here, Keith?
I'm not sure.
All right. But Washington County is kind of struggling to get some of these things online. They have a lot of high density apartment buildings and things coming in this area. But this was the last segment of their development to come online. They did a great job with connecting their parks. So they have a regional stormwater facility that's controlled through a weather system. That has interactions with the neighborhood park and. And set up, so it has like a walking path all the way through it. They, they alley loaded a number of the houses and faced the houses in toward like courtyards and things of that nature. So it really created a, like a little neighborhood gathering point and all these, they, they really used green space effectively is what I'm getting at. And they did a great job of it. It's still in development, but it has come a long way since I've been out there. But they really did a great job of tying their parks together through these linear parks and tying their, their water features, which were challenges. They had a lot of challenges with stormwater that they addressed throughout that area. And I think we can learn a lot from the North Bethany example on how they dealt with their stormwater. And ways in which they made, they turned a problem into a community resource and a, an aspect that the people can actually. Use for recreation purposes. You'll see in this picture here on how they incorporated some of those natural areas along with their, their walking paths, the street skates. Here's their higher density town center areas. They really did a great job with the playgrounds, lots of like playgrounds that are intermixed throughout the neighborhoods. Along with some nice open spaces. They also use these. Help me out, Keith, what are they, the lighter, is it? The, the stormwater things that they use in the road?
Oh, low impact design.
Yes, thank you.
LID, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so they use these low impact design features along their roadways to deal with some of their stormwater concerns. And incorporated those throughout. This is Bethany Village, this is that development that I was just telling you about, it's down the way, but it's really started to come into its own. This is also that Bethany Village, you can see they've gone vertical for their main street areas. This is the intersection coming in on the other side. They've really started promoting some of that higher density development. It's all first floor, commercial retail. They have a grocery store right back in this general vicinity back here is their kind of anchor tenant. You can't really see it on this map, it's not really the same location, but this is what they're kind of working on. Just north of there and trying to incorporate as well in their little commercial area right here. It's smaller, but this is similar to what they're talking about doing. This development actually came out pretty good, the North Bethany one, but it did take about 10, 15 years to come into its own. You know, looking at how we can separate pedestrians and bicycles from the main traffic road flows, those are some, some things that we can look at. You know, we've looked at a number of street designs, Erbs Works has put together a number of street designs that are. Very in what their impacts are, whether it's low impact street or. A downtown core street, like what you'd see up above. Anyway. The guidebooks there, I encourage you guys to take a look at it. If you have any questions, we can roll through those. These are just examples on things that we can learn from, lessons learned. And hopefully develop something that's going to have that lasting appeal for everybody. I think I'm coming to the end here before too much longer, but. This is an example of Villebois and how they use their linear parks. There's actually some pretty cool linear parks in Villebois, but they do have a problem with stormwater, I think. Flooding out their basketball courts and things that they put in these areas. But yeah, I think there's ways that we can create some really nice natural features for people. This is Bethany incorporating that water area. Is there any questions as we go through? Any comments?
I just have one comment about the open space for Villebois. I know that there has been some criticism. I just have one comment about the open space. Uh, for Villebois, I know that there has been some criticism that, uh, too many of the open spaces were a little bit too small. So they weren't particularly usable and then they became more of a, they have become a little more costly for maintenance. So that's always a, a thing you have to try and balance. It's really great to have a lot of green space and so on, but you have to consider what it costs to maintain small places that a crew has to come and mow and whatever else and then go to another. So certainly have to look at that as we go forward. All right, questions, concerns, comments?
I do have a comment from Commissioner Bellows. I really like the inner liner parks in Sherwood, too.
The linear parks? I'm gonna.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think Sherwood does a great job, especially in, uh, some of their downtown areas as well as their, their new growth areas and incorporating their natural areas as well. Um, you know, I mentioned earlier the low, the low curb aspect of the Villebois. We might want to think about that as for our town centers. But ways that we can incorporate those green spaces and get people moving, not necessarily driving pedestrians and bicycles to the main streets, but maybe, um, providing alternative pathways for them, something to be considerate of or things to consider as we go through this stuff. And tying, tying those natural areas together, you know, we, we're going to have a series of parks and trails and things intersecting our area and how we tie those together and what they all look like in the end, really building that community network and framework. With that, I think I'm going to hand it back to, uh, Lori, you want to take it from here? And if there's any questions, comments, or concerns, then we can, uh, discuss them.
Excuse me. So, um, lots of information here, guys. Um, do any of the commissioners have any further comments or questions for staff? Okay, so, uh, are there any additional staff or manager or commissioner reports that we need to?
I would just say if you have some, um, inputs or you'd like to see some consideration for goals or points or considerations that we may have missed um, to get those over to us, uh, Keith and I, so that we can, uh, pass those on to our consultant team and, uh, make sure that those are captured.
Okay. Well, at this point, commissioners, um, it seems like we've kind of come to a conclusion here. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn if you're ready to do that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I guess I made the motion. So it's been moved and seconded that we go ahead and adjourn. Um, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, so we are adjourned at eleven ten. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.